Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I have a roll call please?
President McGinley.
Here.
Trustee Enright.
Here.
Trustee Fasulis.
Here.
Trustee Kenwood.
Here.
Trustee Lattisak.
Trustee Pride.
Here.
Trustee Senek.
Here.
Okay, I think, I believe, Trustee Lattisak.
He's next door at...
He's with Attorney Matthews.
Yeah.
Having a conversation.
Oh.
Yeah.
Paging Attorney Matthews. Paging Trustee Lattisak. Okay, next is audience participation. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to address the board on this item that is not on the agenda? Do we have anyone?
I have no one.
No one. Is there anyone here that did not sign up and would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. We are moving to the consent agenda. Minister France?
Yes, thank you. We've got a rather lengthy consent agenda. I will summarize briefly. The consent agenda consists of thirteen items. Item number one is total expenditures, including payroll and vouchers totaling $4,997,462.31. Item two is the June 26th Village Board meeting minutes. Item three is an ordinance approving zoning variations from the lot area, front yard, rear yard, and accessory setbacks to allow the new construction of a single-story residency at 525 Emerson Avenue. Item four is an ordinance granting approval of a sign variation to allow the installation of two awning signs and one projected sign on the Edie Boutique property located at 499 Pennsylvania Avenue. Item five is an ordinance granting approval of zoning variations to allow the construction of a second pavilion on the YMCA of Northwestern DuPage County property located at 49 Dyck Drive in Glen Ellen. Item six is approval license agreement with the Main Street Pub for tables and chairs in the public right-of-way. Item seven is an ordinance amending, ordinance 5159, which granted approval of a special use permit, zoning variation, zoning map amendment, and exterior appearance approval to allow improvements to the property commonly known as Mary Knoll Park located at 845 Pershing Avenue. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the liquor control code, Chapter 19 of Title, Section 12 of the Village Code to decrease the number of permitted A1 liquor licenses and increase the number of permitted B1 liquor licenses. This is for BlackBerry Market. Item number nine, motion to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with RJN Group of Wheaton in the not exceed amount of $525,000, which includes a 10% contingency for a study of the Central Business District underground sewer and water utility infrastructure to be expensed to the capital projects, sanitary sewer, and water funds. Item 10, motion to increase the appropriations for Phase II engineering services associated with the Taylor Avenue pedestrian tunnel project provided by Alfred Benish and Company in the amount of $18,900 for revised total appropriation of $155,500 to be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund. Item 11, motion to authorize the village manager to execute change order number one to the Phase II engineering services aforementioned for additional investigation and analysis in the amount of $18,900, resulting again in a revised total fixed price of $155,500. Item 12, motion to authorize the village manager to execute a contract with Denler Inc. of Mokene, Illinois in the amount of $40,000, which includes a 7% contingency for the 2017 asphalt street crack sealing program to be expensed to the Capital Projects Fund. And lastly, item 13, a resolution for the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for the purpose of maintaining streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code in the exact amount of $652,648 for calendar year 2016.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the trustees on any of these items?
I have questions on E9 and E10.
Nine and 10.
Can I, I do two, and I suggest that this may be a lengthier conversation. Can we pull nine and 10?
Absolutely.
Yeah, your decisions are...
This one, if you wanted...
Yeah, I'd like to just pull nine and 10 from the consent agenda because I have some questions and obviously other trustees do as well, so...
Okay. Any other items?
I just had a question on 13. Is it, is it for the constitutional amendment that we have to set aside that money?
No, this is, we've been doing this for years. This is just a way for us to use MFT funds most effectively, in our view, to pay for some of the ongoing operation costs and public works that goes into maintaining our streets.
And so is there at some point that we're going to have something come back where we have to set aside a certain amount of money based on that constitutional amendment, things like the vehicle sticker and things like that?
There, we've had some discussions about that internally. We think that we're covered by just the cost of our streets. Program is going to be about the same amount as that revenue, so it shouldn't impact our budget one way or another.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's still kind of undecided anyway, but we're monitoring it. But it's a good point. Something that might, might change the way we allot some of our revenues and expenses.
Got it. Right. Let's only add a bit.
Any other questions?
I have just a question on seven, I think it is. Or, sorry. Yeah, seven, just, I'm just double checking, but I assume we had no residents' concerns about, about this.
Well, I believe Stacy can answer. You were at the meeting, right?
Yes.
I know some of it, but go ahead.
So there, this is related to the paddleball request from, at Mary Knoll Park. There were residents there that did speak. The concerns that they raised were related to some lighting and noise. And actually, there was an ordinance that was previously approved for Mary Knoll Park which had a kind of a shut-off time for lighting at the mini golf course. So they wanted the Plan Commission to discuss those things. And at the end, the Plan Commission did add some conditions that addressed all of their concerns. One was about landscaping. One was about the time that the lights have to go off and that some security lights can remain on and, but all the conditions that they added at the meeting were in response to that resident input.
So everyone was okay with the 11:00 PM? That just seems a little late to me.
That was based on the time that paddleball has been ending there, so it gives people about 15 minutes to get off the court and get into their cars, so...
Okay, so 11:00 PM is the shut-off time?
I believe so. I'll have to look back at the minutes. Yes, okay. Thank you.
And it sounded like the commissioners were all okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, may I please have a motion for item 1 through 8 and 11 through 13?
Madam President, I move to approve consent agenda except for items nine and 10, which were removed to be discussed later today, and approval of payroll and vouchers totaling $4,997,462.31.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call please?
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Pride?
Yes.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Lattisak?
Yes.
Trustee Senek?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. Before we move on, I'd like to point out that we made a couple of motions here for some of our downtown business establishments, and we have some representatives here. So Edie Boutique, Mr. Tom Bachman, is that correct? Would you like to come up? Congratulations, you are getting a new sign, two new awnings, and if you wanted to talk about your business, you may step over there to the microphone.
Thanks for having me. I don't have that much to say. As you said, my name is Tom Bachman, and my wife, Amy, and I opened up Edie in Glen Ellen as our fourth store. There will be more to come. We chose Glen Ellen because we heard that it was an up-and-coming town and that it was a great place to do business, and so far that's proving to be very true. Edie carries jewelry, handbags, clothing. We believe that we're on trend, but not too trendy, but we're well-priced. We receive merchandise absolutely every single week so that it's fun to visit us often. Our staff is very eager to help everybody, whether you're lucky enough to be young at heart or seasoned enough to be young, even more young at heart, and still hip. We try to be very consistent and create a enjoyable environment, whether it's from our front door signage to, I should have brought it up with me, but even our bag that you get when you leave our store is very fun, colorful, and makes a great impression. So we're looking very forward to doing many years of great business here in Glen Ellen, and it'll be part of the whole story now on our website, and I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Would you just give us your thoughts and impressions on like the process of opening your store in Glen Ellen? From a development standpoint, what were the, were there, in terms of working with the staff and going through the process, did you find it too cumbersome? Did you find it, you know, the appropriate amount of review? And I'm sure you're going to be very complimentary, but if you would give us any suggestions on how we could improve that process for future businesses?
Sure.
Like you, I would appreciate it.
You bet. In the long run, it turned out great, and we're super appreciative of that. If there was any hiccup, I would say, in the system possibly would just be the amount of information given. When we first started deciding to come into town, we knew that we had colorful awnings and fun signage, and that for some towns, I will say Naperville was probably more difficult to work with than Glen Ellen, just because they were very stringent on color and more peripheral things than big picture, which I think Glen Ellen covered better. When I first brought, you know, I first called and said, listen, we're bringing a store, please visit our website, take a look at what our stores look like, and if there's any issues that we'll come against, please let us know. And at the time, we're, oh my gosh, your stores are so cute. No, I don't anticipate any issues. So we had the awning company come and develop what our awnings were going to look like and what our sign was going to look like. And then when I came in, is when I found out there were all kinds of ordinances and things that we were not in line with. And even when that process took place, I was never really, I wasn't, I shouldn't say really, I was not given a list of, okay, here's the things you need to follow to make sure that you're doing this right. So it became too long of a process because of lack of information, I think was, was part of it. And when it was first brought to my attention that I could go to the ARC to have it reviewed again, it was presented to me in a fashion that it was very difficult to do that, it was very expensive to do that, and they made it sound like you don't really want to do that. So we first then got a very rudimentary and very simple signage program put through. And then as we got to know the town better and walked around, we saw, well gee, that's something we wanted to do and somebody else has it, and there's something else we were told we couldn't do and somebody else has it. So I'll admit, I got a little upset, so I decided to go back to the Development Planning Commission and say, okay, I'm seeing all these different things in town that you told me I could not have. I need a better reason than just, no, I can't have it. So that's when we then decided to go before the ARC. They were great, that whole process. Once we learned what we needed to do, the process was actually pretty good. I think it was really just the lack of information going in that made the process take 90 days to get accomplished.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
And the ARC, was there any lease canceled or anything that you were trying to get to, but they never quarrelled, so there was...
Part of it was delayed on my landlord's part, because there was a couple of things he needed to sign, and he didn't get them done in time. So we got the paperwork in like three days before the next ARC meeting, and I said, well, you know, we have to put it out there for 15 days, and there's all the other things that have to take place. Again, I wasn't aware of the 15-day in the newspaper part, so it felt longer than it maybe was, but it was again because of lack of information.
Thanks. Welcome to town.
Thank you. We're excited to be here, and again, now that we're through it all, everybody truly did a great job, and we're very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have BlackBerry Market is changing and expanding their business. Anna or Bob Davidson here?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and tell us what you're planning?
We're going to do it together.
Awesome.
Safety in numbers.
Yes, we're expanding right now. What we did tonight was we're switching up our liquor license. Our liquor sales, we just checked, are less than 1% of our business. It's a very tiny part, and we use that to do mostly events, special events. And we are doing a small expansion, which we are hoping will expand our special events, so we wanted to just have the ability to do like a whiskey pairing dinner or maybe some specialty cocktails at events or just a few more things.
BlackBerry Old Fashioned is where I'm at.
Yes. That's, that's why we were on the agenda for that. Do you want to add anything on the expansion or...
No, I think just partly for, a lot of people have asked about the expansion. We have been trying a lot of different ways to expand in a variety of reasons for the last two years, and we've been eyeing the jewelry store for three years now.
Just pacing back and forth.
It was a long retirement. But we're excited to, you know, move into that space. We've got the plan submitted, you know, part of the hope there is just, actually, we're just, partly it's just for our kitchen. We're, we're pretty slammed space-wise, and so we're going to move our bakery over there. For the most part, it's going to be very, very much the same. We're changing some flow, fixing a lot of things. We'll be five years this December, and so that, we're, we're excited to kind of implement some things we've learned over the last five years. And part of that is just in the winter, we do hurt for seating, and so we're going to be using that space for seating during the winter months.
Fantastic.
If I may?
Yes.
You heard my, my prior question, and so I have the same question for you. I mean, if you were to look back on your experience, is there anything that you would suggest that we look at in terms of trying to make the process more efficient for existing businesses, current businesses moving into the village?
Your best asset is right here.
Yeah, we love Stacy. She's awesome, really easy to work with, always answers questions, and I, I think she deals all the time with who we were when we started. When we first started the process, we knew nothing, we didn't know how to do it, and so I think it always feels a little cumbersome because of that. I mean, I, you know, hadn't been through it before, just even listening to the sign, you know, we went through the same thing.
We were probably...
Now it feels like, oh, 90 days, that was nothing, but at the time, it felt like forever, you know? So I would say, we love working with Stacy, and we know it's a process, and there's heaps to jump through, and we just want to always do what we're supposed to do and, you know...
So we, I mean, we've had a few things with this expansion, and Stacy's really helped us...
Part of the process, yeah.
You know, navigate those, and some of them are just from a building code standpoint, is sometimes frustrating what you have to do to...
To a 100-year-old building.
What you're, what you're hoping is, you think is a simple project, all of a sudden comes, I mean, as you know, I'm sure for most projects that come through here, and it feels like it doubles quickly with stuff that you would not even be aware of. And so that's, that's hard to, I think, swallow sometimes. But honestly, we're, we're in a better situation than we thought we were going to be in, so...
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I think we're all pleased to have your business in town, and I look forward to, you know, the expansion and a continuance.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of surprising that it's been five years since that first video went out. I don't know if you go back and look at that video, but that was five years ago. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago.
Yeah, it's blown, yeah.
I'm also glad you guys were eyeing the jewelry store for the right reasons as opposed to for other reasons, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to celebrating your five-year anniversary, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, and then we have one more. Is anyone here from Main Street? Okay, I didn't think so, but just so you know that we did just expand or provide the ability for them to put tables outside, so we're very, very excited for that. Okay, so before we move on, this is the time where I announce for anyone who has not been to our board meetings, if your items are done, it is not rude to leave. It is quite okay, so we fully expect it. But thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Absolutely. All right, so item number nine, if we can go back to that. Let's see, who, we had Trustee Senek or Trustee Kenwood?
John, you go first.
Sure. This, you know, for me, this was a, a big-ticket item, right? It was a half a million dollars, and I think there's a lot that's gone behind this from previous boards. So I, you know, for me, I, I really wanted to, before approving this, just get a mini update on where we are. I think this, this has been in the works, what, for five years or something like that, so just trying to understand where we are and what the status is, and we've got some new board members as well, so like to make sure they're informed as we decide how to move forward. I think it's an important thing to update our infrastructure downtown, but, you know, really wasn't around when all this started, so just looking for that, and I spoke to Mark about that this afternoon.
Yeah, Rich, can you give a little bit more background on that?
Sure, absolutely. One of the projects that, you know, Mark really brought to my attention that was important to the board previously was doing a comprehensive improvement to the downtown street scape, so updating the curbs, the gutter, sidewalk, putting bumpouts in, making the downtown more attractive, bringing it up to kind of modern, modern street scape practices and improvements. This, the intent of this assignment is really to do the, the really important investigative work prior to making significant surface improvements. So on all of our roadway projects here, where we're doing any type of extensive improvements to the, the surface, as I previously described, we do investigate the condition of the underground infrastructure before we make those improvements. And reason being, as described in the memo, a lot of the infrastructure is considerably old. During the investigations and just the, the two years that I've been here, on several of the street projects, we found some significant deficiencies, sections of sewer that were collapsed, sinkholes, sewers that were completely blocked, so we like to identify those in advance of bidding the projects out. So the, the purpose of this assignment is to take a look at more or less all of the storm sewer and sanitary sewer infrastructure in the Central Business District, just so the board understands, we do have a separate system, so the raw sewage is in one pipe and then stormwater, clear water is in another. This project would involve televising about 12,000 feet of sanitary sewer main, inspecting about 150 manholes. We would be televising about 20,000 feet of storm sewer. We'd also be doing investigation of service connections. Public Works does have some capabilities to do in-house televising, not necessarily set up for an assignment like this, but one of the things that we cannot specifically do is televise service connections, so the pipes that go from the main back towards the buildings, that would be included within this assignment. In addition to that, we would be doing building inspections to try to identify if there's any clear water connections. For example, actually, one of the properties we have been working with is BlackBerry Market. We know there's some downspouts that have been directly connected to the sanitary. We're trying to identify those. Those do place a burden on our sanitary sewer network, however, we're not aware of all of those issues, so that would be investigated as part of this project. We'd also do smoke testing, literally pumping smoke into the sewers and seeing if we have any smoke coming out of the pavement. We'd do some die flood testing where we would flood the storm sewers with water. We would not cause property flooding, but we'd be looking for sources of stormwater getting into the sanitary, again, trying to reduce the burden on, on the village's infrastructure. One of the other things that's included within this assignment is the village has a model of its sanitary sewer network in the CBD, and one of the things that we have not done is update that model fairly recently. So RJN actually has our model, just so happens they, they have a copy of that as they worked on it previously. They would bring it up to, up to basically the current conditions, update it with the new pipes, any changes that have been made over the course of the years since the model was done previously. We would also do flow testing, so we'd look at what the base flow is in the sewers and what the wet weather flow is. We'd be looking at what our capacity is. We have some big developments proposed in the CBD. We just want to make sure that we have adequate capacity for those, because when you start adding 200, 300, 400 residential units, your sewers might need some upgrades, or you might need to make some other accommodations in the development or in the village's public infrastructure to accommodate, to accommodate that. So it's been 20 years since we've done anything in the CBD as far as upgrades to the, significant upgrades to the underground infrastructure. That was done as part of a resurfacing project, so it really wasn't a comprehensive overhaul, a lot of repairs. Previous to that, it really goes back to the mid-'80s as far as when we'd made any significant improvements in the CBD. So we went through a process. We had identified basically the, the scope of the work, the quantities, there was base quantities put together. We advertised this earlier in the year, soliciting proposals from firms. We got two proposals back, one from RJN, one from V3. Based on our evaluation, we felt that RJN put together a more comprehensive approach and actually came out to a little bit better of a value for the village. In terms of the schedule, Carol Giokas from RJN is here, she could probably comment more on that, but we're looking at about a six-month assignment. We would do flow testing, though we wait to do that until next spring, because that's really the time to do that type of investigation, because we do have to pay for the meters on a, on a monthly basis to rent them. So we obviously want to do that when we have, when we're anticipating wet weather events. But we'd anticipate by next summer, we would know what upgrades need to be made in the CBD. We would design those, put those out to bid, and then the plan would be to get the CBD, the underground improvements constructed in late 20s, in 2018, early 2019. Obviously, I think we want to talk to the board about what the ultimate form of the street scape improvements would be, but our goal would be to start engineering on the street scape improvements next year and start getting that project ready essentially to build. So I think there's going to be a lot of discussions with the board in regards to what the budget is for the street scape improvements. There's still opportunities to continue discussions, but this is really the first step to prepare ourselves for, for ultimately doing the project.
Could I add too, I mean, in addition to the, to the obvious, the infrastructure, the sewer and water and sanitary and storm sewer, you know, we had talked about, I know that prior board that DeHann and I were both on, I think even before that, as these things are looked at, it would be good to make sure that we also address, you know, where we've had power shortages, getting, getting street lighting, the Christmas lighting up, and then I think even some, some street lighting issues. And then one of the other things was doing, trying to underground some of the, some of the wires again along, along lines of getting the, the Christmas lights on, so we don't have extension cords running from tree to tree in addition to those lights, but also having raceways or pipes underground, maybe that might run from street light to street light that would allow us to pull stuff through there later for sound downtown or for, to facilitate Wi-Fi in the Central Business District. So I can just up the, throw out there for consideration as these things are being done. And this has been discussed for a long time, so I mean, for the newer board members, I think it's, it's about time, and this is just really reconnaissance work, so...
As a newer board member, I can tell you, I've talked about this for the last five years on capital improvement commission, so it's been, it's been well-vetted and it's time. I think it's been pushed back a number of times just to either restructure the funding or look at the funding. I know CIC did an extensive analysis, two years ago at least, on the proposed improvements for the downtown in terms of street scape, and took a hard look at what is the best way to implement that, and that's part of this. So I think it's, it's very necessary and well-deserved.
So a couple of questions on some of the assumptions when this work is being done. At this point, this, at this point, you don't need any assumptions in terms of, hey, if we add 1,000 units downtown, what's the implication? This analysis will be able to tell us, hey, if we did do that, here are the consequences of our existing infrastructure, right? I don't need those assumptions going in. In other words, the test doesn't change based on that, is that correct?
Correct. So we build a model so that you can run different scenarios. This would not be a comprehensive analysis looking at, you know, what's going in specifically on the Crescent Glenwood development or here on Main Street, but it would put us in a position where we can, we can run some scenarios and we can see what type of issues we have.
Right.
And that's really kind of the key point, though, is to see, you know, we should know pretty, pretty soon off the bat, once we do the flow metering, where we have issues and problems. We know we have a lot, we already have some areas that are kind of at max capacity, so, but we would, we would take a look at that. We would be able to take a closer look at that as well as the developments are identified specifically.
Yeah, my concern is, do you need those assumptions before you run the task? But this is really kind of a current state evaluation capability, and from there you can determine what the implications would be if we modeled something differently in terms of what the downtown looks like.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, so CIC has been involved, it's been vetted, it's timely, so from our perspective, if we do this, right, then we don't really have, and I'm asking, because I, I'm not on CIC, but I wasn't when this was discussed or on the board, but I'm assuming there's a big number there for this? Is that number budgeted, or is there a placeholder out in the next couple of years for that?
We have had a placeholder in place for some time without knowing the full scope. The study would help us get to us closer to that final number. But as Rich alluded to, we, we have a kickoff meeting for the budget. We're going to discuss capital at the August workshop. I think we'll, we'll raise these, these issues again and probably have to bring it back to a separate workshop to talk through some of the scope questions and some of the direction we need in terms of funding and budget and those types of things. So we certainly haven't finalized a budget for this project.
So order of magnitude, because I feel if we're, if we're, if we're approving this, we're, I think we're committing to a priority here as a board to want to move this forward, right? We don't want to just do this and then let it sit on the shelf for five years. So five to 10 million type of expenditure?
Probably, yes.
I mean, I think that's important in terms of our vote since we're also looking at it underpass and all the other stuff, right?
Rich, what's the, what was the amount that was in the 20-year plan for the downtown redevelopment that?
So the, the, I think that the board had previously indicated it was not interested in spending more than about four and a half million dollars on the streetscape. We have historically put about a million dollars in for the underground improvements. We did budget for this assignment for this year, but we don't, until we complete this, we don't really know what the underground improvements are going to cost us.
And I think the other thing we want the board to revisit is the scope in terms of how we're going to time this thing out. Are we going to do north of the tracks, one phase off of the tracks, another? Originally, we had thought about keeping the development areas near Gishi and near Machesny out of the project. Now I think it makes sense to maybe reconsider that and incorporate a larger area in this project. Particularly if it makes sense to do it in terms of economies of scale since we're doing work. Don't go back three or four times and, and impact the downtown. So all that's got to be back on the table and discussed. Rich, the, the work that we looked at two years ago and we looked at, you know, which intersections, which sidewalks to redevelop and rebuild per the streetscape plan, is, is that the effort that is in alignment with the four and a half million dollar number?
Approximately.
Sounds larger than what I thought, I recall the streetscape component of that effort was.
Well, really the four and a half million dollars is for just basic rehabilitation of the streets and sidewalks with some bump outs at critical locations, Main Street particularly, and then Crescent east of Main where the kind of the focus areas. That was per kind of discussions with the CIC, we kind of scaled back. What we thought we originally wanted to do is like a more comprehensive approach to the CBD, but then we had some of these pending developments and things like that that were coming in. So one of the things I do want to add though is, is we are getting to the time where the, the streets are due for resurfacing, particularly Duane Street here, west of Main Street. A lot of the other streets are basically on the, next year will be 20 years for them. So we do have a grant as well. We have six years to get that project to letting. So, but at the same time, we, the streets do, do need some work in the near-term future here. And it'd be nice to, at least just engineering wants to just emphasize, you know, we'd like to try to, you know, rehab the streets, but then, you know, do the CBD, the underground improvements in, in advance of that. So I think that the timing would be appropriate from that standpoint to get the assignment going.
So to summarize, we got the streetscape plan going. This is a precursor to that so that we know if we're ripping up streets, what we might want to do to improve the infrastructure. Allows you to model so that we can basically understand what the implications are, some of these developments that might be occurring, so we can prepare appropriately. Not sure if I heard this correctly or not, but it sounds like in your mind, whatever the infrastructure improvements would be, you budgeted, you need this to know what the actual dollars are. You've currently budgeted a million dollars for that. So we should, at least at this point, assume infrastructure improvements would, would at least be a million, likely more? Or is that a good amount to have for this type of infrastructure?
That, that was just a placeholder really, and I, I have to check all the background on that. But I believe it was kind of a discussion, you know, a high-level discussion where that number came from. I know there's some sections of Water Main, even newer Water Main that staff's concerned about. I'd say we could, I could say we could probably be looking more than a million dollars. I think it would be reasonable.
It's a placeholder number.
It's a placeholder number, but we did budget for getting this assignment going this year. And then, you know, like I said, next year we will know at this, at this time, we'll have an idea of what sort of improvements we would be needed in the CBD and we could start putting some, some better numbers together for that.
So first of all, let me just say, I'd like to compliment the staff and Richie personally and really for coming up with the idea that we do need to do this for purposes of long-range planning. You know, Capital Improvements Commission clearly has done a lot of heavy lifting on this to help the board try to make some decisions. They likewise deserve a lot of credit for bringing this to the point that it's at. I'm interested in, in the memo that I received, you, the comment is made, sufficient funds are available in 2017. This was a budgeted item as I understand it. Given the unforeseeable nature of this type of work, there will likely be changes in the quantities and the potential need to perform additional investigative work. And my concern is that, you know, we're gonna, you've built in a 10% contingency. Do you think that's enough for the unforeseeable aspects of this work? Or are we going to see later, and understanding that you don't have a crystal ball, are we going to see later for the budget for next year and beyond, additional sums that we're going to need to appropriate for this purpose? Or is the 525,000, because any trustee Kenwood's concerns are right on the money, it's a large number. Do you think that number's sufficient to complete this project?
Honestly, until we do the actual televising, the biggest, the biggest unforeseeable item here is how many service connections we have. So it's very possible you could go in front of a building theoretically and you could have 10 service connections in there. We're paying for each service connection, so that's kind of the, the big ticket item that there would be a sway on. Carol and I did discuss the quantities. We do feel that it was appropriate to go with a 10% contingency at this time. What I would suggest is that we do take a phased approach to this. Where obviously they're not going to complete all of the investigative work immediately. If we find out during the sanitary sewer televising that we're running into an issue, we have far more investigations than we anticipated, we would certainly need to bring that before the board and advise the board, we need a change order for that before authorizing any additional work. But we feel that at this time, it's, it's without, you know, putting in a 20 or 30% contingency. We felt that it was appropriate.
Do you foresee coming before the board, or at least in the upcoming budget process, do you foresee requesting funds for this project in the future budget?
Well, this, so the, the underground study would be hopefully completed by next year. So this particular assignment will be wrapped up at that, that point. I guess for, for the central business district in of itself, it is possible we have, we are budgeting some money for some other investigative work. Our utility superintendent is working on that, so there will be some other assignments, but not in the central business district. It's possible that if we get a very large development or some, some big change in the central business district, there might be some additional modeling work that we would maybe perform in the future once we know what the specific population equivalent or the, the number of residential units and commercial space, et cetera, at that time. But I think this is a pretty good starting point for this assignment. We feel that 525,000 should be able to get us within the ballpark, if you will, for completing the assignment. But there, there also could be a change order, it's very possible.
Well, other than what you've already conveyed to the board, do you see this as a standalone project or phase one of, of more to come relative to the, the scope of work that's reflected here?
I see this as, as the complete investigation of the CBD at this time.
All right, thank you.
Just as a background, Rich, we have also done similar televising exercises over the past six, seven years in our residential neighborhoods. That's really been the basis of the previous board's funding, the cooperative payment program of getting your sump pump properly discharged and finding infiltrations into the system. So it's, it's a continuation, I think, of something that we've been doing as a village to improve our overall underground system. It's just focused exclusively on the central business district, which is where we have the most unknowns.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So we have a sort of model for the residential areas too, like this would be? I don't know that we have, I don't, I wouldn't think we have a model for residential areas the way they would model a storm sewer or a, a water system, distribution system in the central business district, just because the demands are much higher in, in the central business district. But we have certainly done the televising of sanitary and storm sewers in residential neighborhoods to pick up areas that are causing major infiltrations into the system that are not supposed to be there. So we know going into a roadway project in a given area that we need to fix three more manholes than we thought we were going to have to fix as a part of the project so that we can avoid excess water coming into the system.
The village does.
When did we do this study, six, seven years ago?
2009.
2009 is the basis of a lot of the neighborhood improvements I've been making over the last eight, nine years. So that's what the basis of what we do, our lining program. A lot of the sewer covers have been replaced and improved, et cetera, et cetera. So again, we, we do those projects because in the end, we're saving money at GWA for not treating storm sewer water unnecessarily.
We, we do have a, a model of our water distribution system. That's something that we will be updating as well as a master stormwater management plan. Although those are kind of global models that are fairly relatively recent. But again, we, so we do have models of those systems as well.
And then since the train stations in the middle of this, if there's at some point there an interest in putting in some sort of pedestrian crosswalk, that would also be part of this model? We would tie that project into the streets here, certainly. Yeah, we'll align those projects at some point down the road.
I'm assuming these tests aren't really designed for that, they're more the infrastructure support. So I, I mean, I guess we'll, we'll understand what we have from an infrastructure perspective underneath the train station to see that if we do something, we need to enhance or improve, right? And, sorry, was that? And then, so again, the way I look at voting on this, it's like, this is a priority. We're going to get this streetscape, the infrastructure done. How, what's the funding mechanism for this? Is this, we go out and get bonds, five million bucks, six million dollars? Is that, is that how this works?
That'd be one of the options that we'll be looking at. But again, that's a little, we're a little ahead of pace there. We'd like to talk about this in, in concept with the rest of the CIP project in the August workshop and then bring that, you know, some budget and finance options back to the board later this year.
Okay. But, so that's one option, one funding mechanism?
It would be yes.
I'm assuming there aren't the reserve, I'm assuming there's not this kind of reserve sitting around. We just pull that and go do the project, right?
Probably not by itself, given the.
What other mechanisms would you use besides?
Tiff dollars potentially, that would be more, you know, paid, paid for upfront and then paid back with the Tiff District down the road. I know that's a key funding mechanism that Wheaton is using in their downtown project. So we'll have to explore some other options and see what else we can come together, come up with and, and discuss with the board.
And let me just clarify, are you asking funding of this 525,000 or funding of the project?
I mean, by approving this, we're saying, you know, it's, we're saying, we're, we're thinking it's important and it's a priority to, to get the downtown upgraded from an infrastructure and streetscape perspective. That has a dollar amount associated with it. And I was curious what the funding source for that was.
Okay, I, I'm.
Not just the 525, yeah.
I thought you were asking about the 525, which is now I wanted to clarify. Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, before we bring that to motion, let's bring up number 10. Phase two engineering services for the Taylor Avenue pedestrian tunnel project. Questions on that item?
Yeah, so similar situation here. This has been ongoing for, I don't know, five years maybe, six years. And it sounds like we're getting a change order here or at least doing some more engineering work. Just trying to understand where we are. Is this happening in 2018? Is it happening in 2019? Just trying to get that, you know, an understanding of that. And again, I spoke to Mark about this earlier, so that.
All right, absolutely. So earlier this year, we wrapped up phase one engineering, which is kind of just the preliminary planning process for the project. I actually want to mention, we have Mike O'Connor from Benish. He might want to jump up here in case there's any questions. So we, we had phase one completed earlier this year, which is a, a good step forward with the project. We have been interacting with Union Pacific Railroad as of recent. We sent in plans to Union Pacific for their review back in April. Their review's been taking a little bit longer than anticipated despite a lot of pressure from myself, Mark, Mike and others. We're continuing to get a, a delay in the response back. We really need UP to review two different wall types for the end of the tunnel. And, and those are really going to drive the detailed design, the next step for the process. So upon, you know, UP giving us some direction here, we can, you know, continue forward with detailed engineering. We have met with IDOT, they're aware of the project. We're working on a temporary easement at the southeast corner of Willis and Taylor with the resident. That'll be just at the north end of the tunnel. It's a temporary grading easement, so we continue to work forward with the process. It's just we're, we're waiting for Union Pacific review. We've put in a petition to the ICC to get their sign off on the project as well. So at this time, the, the, we're targeting realistically a March 9th letting with IDOT. And again, that's pending kind of, you know, as we continue to work with UP moving forward, you know, that's, that's the, the earliest that we could get the project constructed would be the summer of 2018. Once we do get some feedback from UP, we planned on giving a formal update to the board on where exactly we're at, because once we know what their direction is on two different wall types, we'll be able to kind of nail down the schedule for you as far as getting the project to letting.
So do you see any risk or concern of this not being able to be completed in 2018?
It's, it's certainly possible. Until we have final design approval from UP, we're not going to, we need to get to the letting. Once we get to the letting, then the, the project at that point is, things are in place and the project's in place. And, and, you know, we're, we have officially entered into the next step of, of getting the process constructed. But even at that point theoretically, if the letting process didn't go well, until we have a favorable bid that the board is willing to approve, the project's not going to get constructed until the contract's awarded.
And how's this letting process work? I mean, March is seven months from now. That's the earliest we can get in, or?
Right. So there's set timeframes. I don't know, Mike, if you want to kind of talk about, maybe come up here. There's, so there's set dates for the IDOT letting and you have to have your plans submitted at critical timeframes in order to make sure that you stay on the letting schedule. But in addition to just getting your plans, then you have to have various sign offs. So in our particular case, Union Pacific Railroad will be one of the sign offs. The other sign off will be the temporary grading easement and some other things. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, they, like Rich is saying, the IDOT has a, if you're going to go at the March 8th letting, then they come all the way back to September 28th where you have to have final plans in. And then that helps them check all the boxes until you get to their letting. So it's pretty well defined how IDOT makes you do it. And we're, we're planning on meeting the September 28th with final plans, given we get responses from the Union Pacific with the wall type that we can use.
So 9/28 is a key milestone date for us to stay on that March 9th or March 8th letting? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. There's actually, there's, there's several dates. We can send you the calendar and if you, I could send it to Mark if you want to send it out to the group. But it's, it basically lists out the various approvals that are required at, at the critical dates. I, I just want to state, there's really no way unless the, the board said, hey, we want to authorize a, a lot of additional dollars towards structural engineering and we want to, you know, have a couple alternates ready. That would really be the only way to try to expedite the process. But even then, we're still, we can't submit anything to IDOT until UP said, you know, wall type A or wall type B. So really the, the, the controlling item here is UP getting their sign off and then we can. we can, can get the, the structural engineering on the walls going. So the, the change order is for additional soil borings. So one of the things UP is, is looking to make sure as a provision of their tunnel, typically speaking, with a tunnel project, you need to construct the tunnel across the entire right of way of the railroad, which in our case, it would have extended into the, the private property on, or on the north side of the tracks, the trail would have went into the yard. So that really wasn't a, a practical option for us. So we shortened up the limits of the tunnel on the north side. UP basically said, we want to be able to expand our tracks, one track on either side. You have to have, you know, provisions for that. So they're reviewing the two different wall types to decide which one's the right one for, that's going to meet their needs, that they feel are most appropriate to facilitate expansion of the tracks in the future, whether or not that's a likely thing that's going to happen, it's, it's what we're subject to their requirements. So the, the change order is for a, a deeper soil boring for the walls, and it's also for drought stabilization, so when they actually drill and push the casing underneath the tracks. Typically speaking, on some projects, UP requires that the contractor develops the drought and stabilization plan to just monitor the tracks. But in this particular case, they're requiring it as part of the phase two engineering. So they want this worked on in advance, so this would be an expense that's going to come off of the construction side. Now, the only, yeah, so the only thing is, though, the construction is, is covered by the grant, so this is, in, in essence, an additional expense on us, given that it's, it's part of the design, which is not part of the grant. So we are, we are paying for the full amount versus just 20% of it during construction.
Okay, and if I missed the March 9th letting, when's the next one?
June, um, mid, mid-June.
Order of bank due.
Yeah. Around mid-June.
June. And so then, if it were June, we could, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we get this done in 2018. If it were June, we'd still, we'd still be able to get done in 2018?
Well, before you answer that, we were also speaking today, that we need to speak to the schools, because that is a important travel back and forth between the schools. So I do not know if we can construct during the school season. So if we miss the March, we may be delaying a whole year because of school.
Well, I thought this, I thought it was only going to impact us for a week.
Was it three?
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating about a four-week closure right now of the roadway. Again, we'll, you know, a lot of it does depend on, on some of the details that we are working out through phase two. One of the other things that, that is going to impact the project is the dropping the COMED cables. So COMED has high voltage lines south of the tracks and lower voltage lines in the north side of the tracks. Those will need to be dropped. So a- again, it's, we need to work out all the details in phase two to know the exact timing of the, the length of the closure, but it would be more than one week. Installing the tunnel under the tracks, we were anticipating kind of three days or so.
That's what I was thinking of, yeah. Okay, so you're saying there's more, more of a disruption than just doing the tunnel itself?
Correct. We're going to completely replace the pavement underneath the roadway, so, underneath the tunnel, so obviously just to remove and replace that, there's cure time required for the concrete, so you're looking at a couple weeks there between removal and replacement and getting that back open.
In terms of the deadlines, too, Rich has done a nice job of keeping the CIC and the board informed in the engineering report. The latest one went out Friday in the managers' report, so you can see all these deadlines and how we're trying to track back to, to that March letting.
And I'm calling them daily to try to get, uh, some direction on this review, so we are pounding them as much as we can, so.
Yes, with the, I mean, with the school reaching out to them help out, or not?
No.
No?
We're, we're trying to hear ideas. So, all right, great, any question, other questions?
Rich, you may, I believe you have answered the question, the primary question that I had, which is, when I read the memo, you point out that while on other project, the task of drought stabilization and settlement monitoring are typically performed by the contractor during the construction phase, U-P-R-R is requiring that as part of phase two engineering. Is that my understanding correct?
That, that was the assumption that was made, yes, when Benish put together the proposal, was that, that traditionally speaking, that's been done during construction. My understanding was that, that's what was done with the Lombard Tunnel. However, that was done some time ago, and there have been some kind of issues they've had, not necessarily UP, but others with, uh, construction incidents, and I think they're in a certain regard, taking a more conservative approach.
Well, my point is simply that the expense that we're looking at here would have been incurred, but it would have incurred later in the project. What is being proposed here is just, that expense is going to be moved up into essentially the phase two engineering part of this. So from an appropriation standpoint, we're not really incurring, if you will, additional expense, we're just moving that expense earlier on with the idea that we will not need to incur that expense later. Is that an accurate statement?
That, that's correct, but the grant for construction would have covered 80% of the cost, so now we're, because we're fully covering the cost of design, we're, we're bearing the full expense.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, may I please have a motion for items number nine and 10?
Madam President, I move to approve consent agenda numbers nine and 10, a motion to, uh, do spend money for the downtown underground sewer, and a motion to change order for Taylor Avenue.
Second.
Hold on, so much time.
Oh, just for a point of clarification.
Withdrawn.
Just for a point of clarification, we removed these items from the consent agenda, so the motion is for each individual item separately as if part of the regular agenda.
All right, one at a time.
So does it agree again?
No, he, I would just like to see nine first.
Okay.
And, so, thank you.
Madam President, I may move to mo- to approve a motion to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with RJN Group of Wheaton, not Duxtee, 525,000 for a study of the Central Business District Underground Sewer and Water Utility Infrastructure.
Second.
All right, thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Fasulis.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee Pride.
Yes.
Trustee Senet.
Aye.
Trustee Enright.
Yes.
Great, motion passes, and I have another motion.
Madam President, I move to approve motion to increase the appropriation for phase two engineering services associated with the Taylor Avenue pedestrian tunnel project provided by Alfred.
Benish.
Benish. In the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred for a revised total appropriation of one, one hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
To be expensed to the capital funds project.
Second again.
Thank you. Can I, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Fasulis.
Yes.
Trustee Senet.
Aye.
Trustee Enright.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee Pride.
Yes.
Thank you, motion's passed. Thank you both very much for speaking with us here. Okay, moving on to item F, planning and development process modifications.
Thank you, President McGinley, I have a short presentation, and there are two items under this subcategory in your agenda. So the first relates to the Architectural Review Commission, and at the June 12th and Ju- July 17th Village Board Workshop meetings, the Village Board discussed restructuring the roles and responsibilities of the Architectural Review Commission and the Plan Commission to create a more efficient development review process. And in this process, the Plan Commission would assume the, the responsibilities for sign code variations, and the staff would assume administratively reviewing exterior appearance reviews. Evaluating the role and structure of the Architectural Review Commission has been on the village's strategic plan for at least six years. And there are a number of benefits to moving forward in this direction, and I will go through just a few of those. It would reduce the amount of meetings a project is required to go through, it would increase the efficiency and the conduct of those meetings, decrease the cost for applicants, decrease staff time necessary to prepare for and attend the commission meetings, increase the village's competitive advantage as related to other communities who can process applications much more quickly. Would also reduce the number of meetings that residents, developers, and staff need to attend, which saves time and money for everybody involved. Reduce the extensive level of architectural details that are needed before a business even knows if the Plan Commission is supportive of the use that's being proposed. It eliminates confusing commission rules, which can overlap in some instances, and also maintains the appearance guidelines and exterior review process to preserve village character. So there's a number of benefits that we believe there are in moving forward with this proposal. The, based on the direction provided at the last Village Board Workshop, staff has drafted an ordinance that would dissolve the Architecture Review Commission and transfer sign code variations to the Plan Commission and exterior appearance review to staff. That's a quick summary, we've had a couple of lengthy discussions at Village Board Workshops, but of course, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there questions from the board?
Is there anybody here from the Architecture Review Board?
No.
Nobody?
No.
The chairperson or?
No. They were not able to make it.
From the Planning Commission?
No.
Nobody's here for that either?
No, two other commissions.
Yeah.
We have a Finance Commission member here, but probably not really good, talk about that.
Yeah, I don't know so much of a question, but, you know, a summary, a little bit of what, what Stacy said, I think, you know, we, we feel this will make it easier for people that want to do business in Glen Allen to have one meeting where all their questions can be answered. You know, a lot of this work is already done by, by the village, staff anyway, and so I think that that's good. I just, you know, as I said to you in our workshop, architecture is important, it's what the ICs and it's what, what, what provides the, you know, the, the value that we're trying to do, so it's important we continue that. I know Stacy's team's involved in it. So my only ask on this was that, as we start to shape the new commissions, that we make sure that we're thinking about both, you know, the architecture and the value. I think the most important input to, or an important input is the people's input, I think, you know, as, as much as the gas station was to go through, the input we got from the people, you know, made it a much better project, and quite frankly, that, that didn't necessarily, some of that didn't really come from staff, and some of that didn't come from the commission either. So it's, I think it's, it'll be a good process, and at the end of the day, if we try this for a couple of years and it doesn't work, we can always reinstitute it, right? So.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just want to follow up on those comments. You know, for me, the most important part of the process is to ensure that our residents have the ability to have their interests represented by people that they elect, that the board or whoever makes the decision is accountable to the residents from an elec- election standpoint. And this proposal does preserve that in the sense that the board would continue to exercise oversight over the decisions that are made at the staff level. I was not really comfortable with this at the beginning, but I can tell you that from some of the comments, even those made here tonight, it would suggest to me that our staff is both fully capable and competent and to, to make these decisions, and has exercised good judgment in that process. And so while I'm, I'm reluctant to necessarily divest the residents of that, I do think we are handing that over to a capable, competent group of people who will represent the interests of the residents with the board's oversight there to the extent necessary. And so I have come to, I've come to embrace this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Finally, did you hear from anybody else on the ARC this week?
No. No, I had no further comments. Last I heard from the Architecture Review Commission was the last Village Board Workshop.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? No, okay. And I will also reiterate, since this is the board meeting, that we are changing some of the other process, where we are inviting the public to pre-application meetings, so we are finding other avenues for earlier input from residents and anyone who would like to speak about, especially the larger projects. So we are by no means eliminating or taking away opportunities, we are altering and changing and finding earlier opportunities so that they're part of the process. So, all right, then may I have a motion, two motions, please?
One at a time.
Wait, I'm sorry, one at a time, please. Somebody doesn't want to leave.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 6519-VC, an ordinance to amend the various sections of Village Code of the Village of Glen Allen to dissolve the Architectural Review Commission.
Second.
Thank you, may, uh, trustee Ladisack was the second? And may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Pride?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Enright?
Epstein.
Trustee Senet?
Aye.
Great, thank you, motion passes. May I have the second ordinance, please, or motion, please?
Madam President? I make a motion to approve ordinance number 6520-VC, an ordinance approving text amendments to various sections of the Glen Allen Village Code to allow administrative variations and other approvals.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Ladisack was the second, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Pride?
Yes.
Trustee Ladisack?
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood?
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis?
Yes.
Trustee Enright?
Yes.
Trustee Senet?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. So to follow up on that, we are, are working on a letter to send to all of the ARC commissioners, giving them information about what's happening, a- as well as where they can provide additional input, correct?
Correct, and we are also updating the applications and the website with, you know, to make corrections and creating a new process chart, creating new applications, and so we are in a position to be able to, you know, move forward with this immediately. President McGinley, the second item was related to text amendments for administrative variations. Did you want me to talk about that at all, or?
Okay, okay, great.
Could I, could I ask a question in, with respect to the pipeline, so to speak, of projects that were scheduled for upcoming ARC meetings and so forth? Are we able to incorporate them into the new process and expedite them a little bit?
Yes, we did have a little bit of a backlog of projects that were waiting, actually, to see what would happen with this evening, and also due to the lack of a quorum at the last Architecture Review Commission meeting. So what is going to result is the Plan Commission, where they usually have one to two cases per agenda, for the next three agendas, they have, will have three cases per agenda. So they might be subject to some slightly longer meetings, but we are trying to give them additional background information related to sign codes, and we have set up a training for the Plan Commission with one of our consulting village attorneys, and she will provide information on sign code regulations and some background information that will be helpful to them. So we will be able to accommodate that and get the training in within the next month.
Also, I'd like to compliment you on the presentation of material and the amount of information you provided. Thanks.
Thank you.
Motion.
Thank you. We have, are moving on to our final item, the fiscal year 2016 general fund operating surplus, Finance Director Christina Foyle.
Thank you very much. I promise I will have a very brief presentation on this. The board accepted a 2016 audit at the last meeting in June. The purpose of this agenda item is to determine how to distribute the operating surplus for the general fund for fiscal year 2016. You may remember, or those of you that were on the board would remember, in the prior year, we chose to distribute the 2015 surplus by contributing $400,000 to the police pension fund, and then $200,000 to the facilities maintenance reserve fund. We do have adequate cash reserves in our general fund to be able to distribute the entire general fund operating surplus of $548,331. Staff did review our recommendation for distribution with the Finance Commission, which is distributing $400,000 again to the police pension fund, and then the remainder to the facilities maintenance reserve fund. The Finance Commission reviewed this at their July meeting and is also recommending that distribution to the Village Board. and is also recommending that distribution to the village board. Our Finance Commission Vice Chair Jeremy Vanek is here tonight in case the board has any questions for him. And we're certainly appreciative of him coming out tonight and sitting through the board meeting to the last agenda item.
Christina, could I interrupt for a moment? Is there anything pressing that we would have to approve this tonight?
No.
I'm considering making a motion to, actually, I would propose to make an amendment to, excuse me, a motion to, to table this for, for further board discussion, possibly some executive session discussion before we, we approve the allocation of these funds in this manner.
Are you making the motion? Or are you suggesting you're going to allow some discussion?
The reason why I put that caveat in there was because I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything pressing that was bearing on us.
No, there's, there's nothing pressing. We were just trying to wrap up the 2016 numbers. We brought the audit in June, so we're just bringing this as the next item, but there's nothing pressing on it at all.
Okay, and knowing that, then, I would like to make a motion to table this. We could either set, you know, a, a set date or until the next meeting of the, of the board.
Second.
Okay, and just for further clarification, there can be no discussion of this, so you may not ask any questions. You may, I can only call for a vote. So, Village Clerk, can I please have a roll call, vote for a motion to table this matter?
Trustee Ladisack.
Yes.
Trustee Sennett.
Yes.
Trustee Pride.
Yes.
Trustee Kenwood.
Yes.
Trustee Fasulis.
No.
Trustee Enright.
Yes.
Okay, item has been tabled. My apologies. Hopefully, you were entertained tonight, though. And we will put this motion back on the agenda.
Well, here, here's what I understood. There's, at least there was a feeling to go into executive session before this comes back on, or? Is this?
Well, I, I would have to examine what reason we might go into executive session on this topic. I'm not sure that I, I have that in mind right now.
Okay.
But what I, my thought is that this motion was to table to the next regular board meeting, when this will come up again, which is August 28th.
August 28th.
So, does that mean there's a workshop? I mean, I, my.
If there's a workshop, the week in advance.
Right. I mean, my assumption is that there's a need to discuss this further. That's why this was brought up. So, as long as we know that in the next workshop, we'll have the time to discuss it, whether it's executive session or not, that's fine before we put it back. Otherwise, we'll be at the same place, right?
Greg, if it's necessary to address this in executive session, can we go into executive session from workshop?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think we're covered.
Okay.
To set it, add the date certain, so.
Just want to make sure we're covered. I like being covered.
All right, then, we can move to reminders.
Yes, thank you. We've got a couple of reminders. The next Village Board Workshop is scheduled for August 21st, 2017. Tended to be for 7:00 P.M. We might have an early start depending on how their agenda looks. In room 301 of the Glen Allen Civic Center. And then our next Village Board Meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 28th at 7:00 P.M. Right here in the Galligan Board Room of the Glen Allen Civic Center.
All right, thank you. Moving on to other business. Do we have other business? I would just like to thank the La Busca rider, or La Busca Town for sending us a team bicyclists for the Intelligenzia races. The team did really well. They placed in the top 10 in half, or five of the 10 races, and they won one of them. So, they left today to return to France. So, that was very fun. Anything else?
If I could just add, I think it's, it's been a busy couple of weeks in Glen Allen, so I want to thank all the, all staff that have been involved in the Fourth of July activities. We'll be acknowledging the Fourth of July Committee next meeting. And then, two weeks ago, we had the Intelligenzia Bike Race as well as Jazz Fest. Last weekend, we had Sidewalk Sales. So, thanks for all those that volunteered their time and those that coordinated those events over the last month in Glen Allen.
Fantastic. May I have a motion to adjourn?